We've been in executive session and now waiting and we have a guest here that is an Eagle Scout. So he gets to lead the pledge. Are you okay with that, sir? Sorry to put you on the spot there, sir. Alrighty, well, you are actually next on our agenda. So give us a second to bring that up. Tony, did you discuss the microphone?
Henry, tell us a little bit as far as where you're at grade, all that stuff. So the board pretend like we don't know anything. And you're talking to a bunch of strangers.
Okay, um, good evening. Where first, where do you like me to stand?
Right there.
Okay.
We're gonna make you earn it, sir. Make you earn it.
Uh, good evening. My name is Henry Lefoon. I am an eighth grade student at Belton Middle School. I am also a life scout currently serving as senior patrol leader of troop 1054. For my Eagle Scout project, I would like to design, construct and install a 28-foot pedestrian bridge on hole two of Cleveland Lake Disc Golf Course.
Okay, give us this. She's trying to connect up to bring your presentation up. Any anytime our director of technology here is here, we it falls apart like a $2 watch. I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't. How are you at technology, sir?
Not very good.
Okay, well, you you are in the right room. You said eighth grader?
Yes. Um, I'm 81, I believe.
The new teachers are?
Uh, Mr. De Petre, Mr. McLean, Mr. Wassig and Ms. Kiefer.
Okay.
I know. He's got an amazing math teacher. I bet you I bet you love math, though.
Yes.
Says our former math teacher. She thinks everybody should love math. I'm just saying.
We'll give him a train in case he must be mayor someday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And uh,
School Board President.
Loving math. Nothing? Okay.
You want us to just move on? Would you would you like to introduce your 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 fan club?
Yeah, so um, this is my dad. Jamie Lefoon, this is my mom Teresa Lefoon. Uh, this is Mr. Feedback from Belton Parks and Recreation. Uh, this is Mr. Geisey, who is a family friend, who is also a structural engineer. And this is Josiah, his son.
Alrighty. All right, we're getting closer. Now we can see how busy your schedule is. Ah, I like it when a plan works, sort of. Alrighty, you are now on again, sir.
All right, thank you. So the objective of this project is to create a safer, more accessible environment for users of the park and disc golf course. This will be accomplished by installing a safer bridge that will replace the current bridge, which is shown at the bottom of the slide. Some benefits of a revitalized bridge include enhanced safety and accessibility, a more durable bridge with an expected lifespan of 40 to 50 years, all while enhancing the aesthetics of the surrounding area. Safety will be enhanced because the proposed design will be vetted by a licensed engineer. It is also compliant with all current building codes. Accessibility will be enhanced because there will be a smooth transition from the ground to the bridge, ensuring easy access to both sides of the creek, even for people with low mobility.
Henry, have you have any pictures of the bridge you're thinking about or anything like that?
Uh, yes, I have those later on in the slideshow.
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, so the bridge is located directly west of the Technology and Maintenance Center on hole two of the Disc Golf Course. I've also included a map with several locations, including the location of the bridge marked for reference. I've taken several steps so far to get to this point in my present in my project. So far, I presented my project idea to Mr. Feedback from Belton Parks and Recreation. Next, I created a concept drawing with computer-aided design software. I then presented that drawing to CFS engineers, which was the engineering firm recommended by Belton Parks and Recreation. They then gave me feedback on my design. I then presented my concept drawing and design feedback to Mr. Geisey over here, a family friend and professional structural engineer to consult on design improvements. Finally, I submitted my improved design to CFS Engineering. Tonight, I'm seeking approval from you, the school board, before presenting my proposal to Heart of America Council for approval. Once this phase is finished, I'll consult with engineers for a final time, obtain final approvals and required permits. Uh, now moving on to the monetary aspect of this project. On February 17th, I estimated the total cost at around $8,000. Uh, money and supplies will be fundraised by myself with any excess being donated to Belton Parks and Recreation. In order to raise this money, I will acquire material donations, discounts and sponsorships from local companies and businesses, solicit monetary donations from friends, family in the community. Some ideas I had for how to do that are shown below. I have secured hospitality donations for the working crew, and I'll also utilize the tax-exempt status of troop 1054's charter organization. Uh, there are several steps that will be taken during the construction phase. These steps include creating signage and rerouting hole two temporarily pending approval from Belton Parks and Recreation, so that disc golfers will avoid the construction zone for their safety. Next will be to demolish and remove the current bridge. After that, we'll construct and install the framework, decking and handrails, and perform one last final cleanup. As a note, labor will be provided by friends, family and fellow scouts, both youth and adult, in coordination with Belton Parks and Recreation. So the first rendering I've included is a side view of my proposed design. And as you know, ground level is flush with the top of the footing and the top of the decking. The footings that are shown will be below ground. And the final rendering I've included is a three-quarter view of my proposed design. And this view shows the footings, decking and handrails in relation to each other. Thank you for your time and consideration. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I'm uh, I mean, I don't know if you can tell I'm smiling because it amazes me how articulate you are.
Thank you.
And how well-thought your plan has been. And for an eighth grader, you're you you speak extremely well. Better than some adults, so kudos to you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lefoon, fantastic presentation, friend.
Miss, she's on, she's zoomed. Didn't mean didn't mean to scare you there, sir. Yeah.
Okay.
Go on, Teresa. He jumped.
I've known Mr. Lefoon for many a years and I expected no less. That was a wonderful presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
So you need from us a approval?
Uh, yes.
The chair will accept a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Eagle Scout project as presented. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Nice job, nice job. We appreciate it.
I do have one question.
Nope, too late. No, go ahead.
What is the estimated time of completion?
Um, we're not sure. We're thinking, um, perhaps may anywhere from six to 10 workdays, really. Um, depending on how long each of the phases take.
Okay.
I was about to get a photo.
Okay. Yes, bring him up here. Yep. Alrighty. That was a great presentation. And like I said, if you if you need to get somewhere, we're just going to do our standard business meeting. You are welcome to stay or, you know, you won't hurt our feelings if you want to go.
But technically, it's not a school night anymore.
Yeah, I didn't know if you heard, but school's not in session tomorrow. We had the end. So alrighty. The consent agenda, Cheryl, accept a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
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 Passes. Report of the superintendent. Dr. Underwood.
Yes, hopefully we will have our presentations to pop up. First off, Dr. Pearson, I have you up first for Wilkins Steam Academy.
Perfect. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, give us just one second on putting up the slides. Dr. Pearson, can you see that?
I can. If you guys are ready, I think Mr. Adams is on here with me, too. He's going to get to experience doing this with me this year as well. So uh, to start, uh, just an introduction, I think I know everyone here on the board, as I've been here a long time. But I'm Dr. Pearson, the principal here at Wilkins. And then I have Mr. Adams joining me and doing a couple of the slides tonight. And he is our assistant here and will continue here next year as well. So, Mr. Adams, would you like to start with our building APR?
Absolutely. Good evening. Hope everybody's staying warm and cool or warm and safe out there. Uh, as you can see on the slide in front of you, we have our building APR for the past three years. Uh, last year, we took a dip of 7.9%. And this is due to the lack of growth in a couple of our performance areas, which will be discussed in the next slide by Dr. Pearson.
As we move down into slide three with our map achievement. So having so many grade levels in our building that's map-tested, it's a lot to cram on one slide. So I'm very sorry about that. Um, I was going to go over some highlights and some areas that we are really focusing on this year as well. So as you're looking through our map scores over the last three years, we have seen consistency throughout our scores, but last year we did take a pretty big dip in our fifth grade ELA and our fifth grade science. Um, with that, we were above the state and district average and all of on all of our tested areas, except for those two. Um, we did see a small decline in our sixth grade math as well. With that, uh, we were still above the state and district average, though, but are hoping to pull that back up a little bit further again this year. A big highlight for us, if you look at those fourth grade scores across the board, and they were high in ELA and in math for us. Uh, we have some very skilled teachers in that area that really push them forward. And one of them was even the winner of the John Ferguson Award this year as well for those scores. Um, with that, we'll be addressing some of the things that we're doing for improvement towards the end on those uh, scores to build because they weren't where we want them to be. And really, that decline in our APR score um, was due to the lack of growth for fifth grade, ELA and science were the two biggest areas that we had um, that we need improvement in.
And in front of you now, you have our attendance for the past three years. We're proud to say that we've continued to grow uh, that overall attendance at Steam for the past three years. And last year, we received all four of our APR points in this area. Some of the ways that we support uh, students attendance in is just making sure that we have engaging projects going on throughout the grade levels, including families and family school environment nights. We build relationships with our families. Dr. Pearson, Officer Hepner, Ms. Jamie and myself. Uh, it is a effort all of us take pride in making sure that students are getting to school and monitoring that situation. And if we have a family that we need to reach out to, we have that relationship to uh, have that conversation with them. And furthermore, we offer clubs such as Lego League, Ukulele Club, Steam Singers. We have our podcast group and NEHS.
So as we move down to the next slide, um, our three main focuses for our school improvement. Our first is that strong focus on literacy instruction, and that's embedded throughout everything we do. One of the things we're doing this year as a district is focusing on that letters training. And I know it's one of those acronyms. So letters is language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. So it's really teaching teachers to dig down into our students' individual needs and figure out what they need to learn to read and write and develop a plan for each of those individual students. We are doing that um, here at Steam K through six. I know the rest of the district is K through four is working on that, but that has been a huge help in us meeting the individual needs of our students, um, which was so needed in everything that we're doing. We're also implementing a new foundations program called Ufly. It's with the University of Florida Literacy Institute, but with that, it's really breaking down what our students need in those foundational reading skills to make sure we're addressing those and building upon them. And then we still have our EL ed curriculum that we've used for multiple years, really focusing on that comprehension and writing piece. And by bringing all of that together in a comprehensive program, we're starting to see really large gains in our literacy with our students. Um, in addition, we're providing those real-world experiences that integrate across the curriculum. That's something unique here at Steam that we've always done, but just keep building upon it and making it better. So really focusing on that critical thinking, how we can take some of the regular curriculum and change it into real-world projects, posing those questions for our students, just like the Eagle Scout project that was just seen. We want our students to develop, you know, finding those problems and developing a solution for it. So kudos to him. That was awesome and loved seeing that. Um, we want them to be collaborative. Um, we want that high student engagement with our students and really focused on that working together. We also do the five E lesson planning, which really focuses on the engagement, exploring, the students explaining, elaborating and evaluating what they do and continuing that process. So they're really developing their own solutions to those problems. And then the last area we had was that positive culture and climate. So last year, I think whenever we presented, we already had the state school of character. We were awarded that national school of character at the end of last school year, which is still a huge celebration. But all of that hard work that we put in there really opened up some different areas for us to work on and build upon. Mr. Adams already talked about our parent nights that we are doing. So we have already had a game night, a literacy night. We're getting ready to have a career night and then a science night as well. These have been huge in bringing in our parents and having that high uh, community engagement as well. During our game night, we had, I would say, at least 100 people in here playing all of those games and working with us and just having fun together as a school community. We've also continued our video announcements, the shout-outs uh, that we do to celebrate our different kids accomplishments as well as teachers, um, and just fostering that family environment for all of our students and staff throughout the school. Are there, I know that was kind of quick on Zoom. It seems a lot quicker for some reason. Are there any questions that you guys have for us?
I am curious. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Karen.
I was curious if you had any thoughts of what attributed to the decline of the fifth grade scores. I mean, even when you compare them to the prior year, fourth grade, they did much better as fourth graders than they did as fifth graders. So I was wondering if there is something that you felt attributed to that.
There were a few things in there. Um, and I don't like to place any sort of blame or, you know, we own all of that together as a team, but with that, we did have a situation where a long-term sub could come into one of the classrooms a week before testing. Um, that classroom probably showed the most decline of any of them. And as we know, a sub coming in right before testing, that's a very hard situation. We do know that impacted it. We had some different different student behaviors that played into that as well. But it's one of those in working with our sixth grade team, because those are the same students that had that dip last year. We have shown huge growth this year and what we're doing with them with our NWEA scores. We're also implementing additional um, strategies and interventions for them to make sure that we are getting them up to where they need to be.
Thank you.
Welcome.
That was also my question as well. And then I've also kind of been surveying, do we feel like behaviors are an influence at all in the classroom's ability to uh, you know, instruct and follow curriculum?
Uh, if we have bigger behaviors, yes. Uh, our teachers have gotten better about if there's a bigger behavior sending those students to Mr. Adams and I, so we can address it directly, um, because we do not want them to get to a high level within the classroom. It, we don't want it to ever be an interruption for the other students.
Thank you.
Alrighty, anyone else? Well, thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, guys.
Next, sir. Mr. Cummins from Cambridge.
Hi.
We are quick. Mr. Cummins, your your slides are already there. We're getting faster as the night goes on.
Well, I'm just glad I didn't have to bat leadoff. I've never batted a leadoff before in my life. It was never fast enough for that. So this is nice to go second. Good evening. Um, it's awesome to be here tonight. Um, representing Cambridge Elementary as the principal. I am lucky to go to work every day with some of the best educators I've ever been around. So very proud of that. Um, yes, we reviewed the data tonight and go through this. And I just want to shout out all the hard-working staff, the teachers, paraprofessionals, um, the custodial and the maintenance team for getting the school ready. I know it's been a tough week, so we appreciate them. All right, as we review the current status of the APR, it's clear that while the data has remained stagnant over the last three years, um, it's not a full reflection of the efforts of the staff who work tirelessly every day to support kids and and grow them academically and socially emotionally. At Cambridge, we do see daily victories in the classroom that cannot always be measured by a single metric such as the APR. Our focus now has got to be on the future. We are committed to identifying strategies that ensure progress, but not only felt that is felt in the hallways, but also reflected in the data that you'll see tonight. Oh, I like this. I don't even have to say, go to the next one. This is good. All right, the map achievement, map map test results, as you can see over the last few years, um, give us valuable insights to areas of strength, um, such as growth in ELA fourth grade, slight growth there, uh, but also shines a light on areas that we can grow in academically and instructionally. And to do that, uh, we'll leverage this data to develop strategic targeted interventions, refine our instructional practices and set personalized goals for student growth. Um, with this strategic approach, map testing will continue to guide our efforts in fostering academic excellence and ensuring that every student reaches their full potential. We we understand the data where it's at and it is what it is. And we've got work to do. And and our focus will be on the future, starting this year. Our APR uh, increase was due to our attendance. Um, last year, we did earn three three points on APR out of four with over a 6% uh, attendance increase. And so we're we're going to build off of that this year and continue to go. I will tell you, as of today or this week, we're at 93% attendance for the year right now. So looking forward to those four points. So the focus is on now, it's on this year and the in the future. And then we have three areas that we're going to focus on. One is increasing attendance. I think there is a saying out there that says you can't, that students won't learn if they're not at school. And I wholeheartedly believe that. To increase attendance, our focus is on um, creating a sense of belonging at school for kids, for staff, for families, making sure that they're welcomed and and warm, receive warm uh, wishes as they come in the building. Uh, we want a school to be a place for them to beat down the doors to want to be at every single day. We celebrate attendance through 95% club. Kids that have been uh, at school 95% or more are put in a drawing to win its free t-shirt that says 95% club. You can see many kids throughout Cambridge wearing those proudly. They're bright yellow. They're proud of those. We have monthly epic assemblies that that I lead virtually. The kids love, we shout them out. Teachers write in shout-outs, we shout them out. We have a really good time with that. But mostly, we need to bring the joy and the fun back to Cambridge, enjoying each other's company, smiling, having fun, greeting kids, high-fiving kids and celebrating their hard work. Student achievement, like Dr. Pearson alluded to earlier, it starts with, uh, we we know any sort of achievement, student achievement increases start with adults. Um, and that's what we're focused on this year. We're we're increasing our knowledge base around the science of reading through our our letters work. Um, we have teachers with that are in letters year one, letters year two and applied letters that have graduated out of the two years of letters. I myself am in letters, um, training for administrators with Dr. Underwood and Dr. Seidman. As well as utilizing Ufly, that University of Florida Literacy Institute, that phonics phonemic awareness, basic reading, foundational reading program that we're using with Fidelity at Cambridge. Um, we're in the midst of fidelity walkthroughs and making sure that we're doing that with um, with laser-like intention and our kids are moving. There's nothing like going into a kindergarten classroom and seeing five-year-olds starting to read. It just makes the hair on your arms stick up. It's phenomenal to watch. In the area of math, we're working on a building-wide scaffolding model. It's called the redraw right. Starting in second grade, kids are attacking word problems and math situations with that redraw right model. It's a way for them to show their work. And we're building from that from second grade all the way to fourth grade. So we're having a common way to attack word problems and situations. And we're starting to see some really phenomenal thinking by kids. And they're putting it down on paper, which helps teachers guide that instruction, adjust their instruction as they move forward through lessons. The last one, area of focus is increasing family involvement. Cambridge is blessed with a great, fantastic family involvement. Our PTO events are really well attended. Earlier this year, we had Grand Friends Day and I think over seven hundred families attended that. Trunk or treat, we ran out of candy. So we see a lot of parent involvement. We're going to build on that. And a few weeks, we have bingo for books, so we'll be doing that. And we just kicked off next week when we head back, our family book, it's our family school book called Mouse and the Motorcycle. And so we'll be doing that at homes. Every student got a copy of that book, whether it's in Spanish or in English. And we'll be doing comprehension questions throughout the week and celebrating that. So we have a lot going on at Cambridge. The focus now is on the future. Really drilling down to what skills kids are missing and how do we attack them and fill those learning gaps. What questions do you have tonight?
I kind of just have the same question that Karen had for STEAM. Do we happen, are we able to identify at this point where the decreases are coming from? And I second what you opened with stating that this is not a full accurate representation of our students. But I'm just curious to see how we're identifying where the gaps are and then strategizing how you're going to approach those.
Yeah, I appreciate that question, Teresa. I think number one, we know the map test captured third and fourth grade achievement, but we know foundationally, when kids have gaps in K one and two, those compound in the older grades and those gaps get larger. And so just personally speaking, my belief is we have to catch those kids early in kindergarten, first and second grade with those foundational skills. And UFLI, the science of reading and letters training will help catch some of those kids. And then strategically intervening with, we are at Cambridge, we're only using UFLI for also our interventions with our older students. So we're using one program to really use it with fidelity, because we know it works, to keep kids moving forward. It's about that diagnostic piece. It's like when we go to the doctor and they say you have high blood pressure, we have to diagnose that first and then we put in interventions. And through N W A, that helps provide those interventions. We know where kids are struggling. And then building the resources and intervention plans from there can help target those goals and those missing skills.
Okay, any other questions? Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Okay, next up, we have Ms. Snyder. Karen, are you with us?
I'm here. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. Hi, Karen Snyder. I'm the new principal at Gladden. And I'm excited to share our data with you because there are so many good things going on at Gladden. So I'm going to also start like everybody else did with the annual performance radar APR. As you can see, in twenty-one, twenty-two, Gladden got fifty-nine point two percent of those points. They had a little bit of a dip in twenty-two, twenty-three. And then you can see in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a huge jump in our APR points, about a forty percent increase, which is quite phenomenal. I kind of want to explain where that jump came from. So I'm going to break it down just a little bit. So APR is comprised of a performance category, which looks at academic achievement and growth. And Gladden got most of our points in this category from growth. Growth looks at your student achievement in ELA and math, and then also in ELA and math with your student groups, like your free and reduced lunch and your multi-language learner population and some other groups. And we actually earned a hundred percent of points in all four of our group categories, which is phenomenal. The previous year, they had only earned about twenty percent of points in each of those categories. So that huge jump helped us with our APR points. And then also in achievement, we got the same amount or more points than we had. And I'll lead into, I'll talk about that more when we look at the map scores from third and fourth grade. And that growth also looked at those cohorts of students moving from third to fourth grade and how they did. So that's where most of our points came from. And then the other part of APR, about thirty percent of it looks at continuous improvement. So that's like our attendance, culture and climate survey, and then the kindergarten readiness. And we earned some more points in attendance than we had in the past. So that's why that had such a nice jump there. So this slide is showing, as the other principal shared, our percent of students scoring proficient advanced in ELA and math. I'm going to start with third grade. So you can see third grade in twenty-one, twenty-two, about thirty-two percent proficient advanced. A little, they had a little jump, a pretty good jump actually, ten percent from twenty to twenty-two, twenty-three, and then a little decline from twenty-three to twenty-four. If you look at third grade math, which is that second chart, about twenty-four percent, twenty-four point six percent of students proficient advanced. And then twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a little bit of a bump. And then they did have a little bit of a decline in twenty-three, twenty-four with twenty-two point eight percent of students proficient and advanced. And looking at our fourth graders, you can see they in English Language Arts had an uphill trend there from twenty-five percent to twenty-eight percent to a huge jump in twenty-three, twenty-four, a good twenty percent jump in the amount of students scoring proficient advanced. And then in fourth grade, twenty-seven in math, twenty-seven point nine percent proficient advanced. We dropped a little bit to twenty-five percent and then a really good jump there from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four with forty-seven point six percent, forty-seven point six percent of students proficient and advanced. Before I go to the next slide, I do want to point out that cohort data, because that is where those growth points came from. So if you look at third grade language arts in twenty-two, twenty-three, about forty-four point seven percent of students as third graders were proficient advanced. Those same students as fourth graders was forty-eight point four percent. So we had almost a five percent increase. And it's even more in math. If you look at the third grade cohort in twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-two point nine percent of students were proficient and advanced. And then they had a huge jump to forty-seven point six percent. That group was fourth grader. So that's where those growth points came in in our APR. And the next slide is looking at attendance, and this is another area that we had growth in. So you can see that every year, attendance has steadily gone up for the proportional attendance. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, that was no exception, and it gave us another M sub six points. So we got three out of four points. And like the other principals talked about, we do a lot of things to focus on attendance. We recognize perfect attendance classrooms and we hang banners on the doors. We say those classrooms over the intercom. We've done some competitions where we had a third grade class that won perfect attendance for a month and they did a chef experience. We just got done with doing, any student who had over ninety percent in January, got to have lunch and a treat with the principal and counselor. I do feel at the elementary level, attendance does lie in the hands of the parents. So I think our best method of getting kids to school is when we see attendance starting to drop or notice some changes. And it's that phone call from the teacher and then the counselor and I also follow up with a phone call. So we can catch any of those chronic students and even ones who are slipping, so we can keep them in that ninety percent zone. And these are our three big school improvement goals, which are very similar to what you've heard. So it's increased reading scores, increased math scores and create a positive and supportive culture and climate. And the area of reading, as the other principal said, it's really focusing on that foundational literacy at K two, but then also pairing that with the staff professional development that they're doing in literacy. And I love that that's not just for K two. I love that we're doing K six with that. Because it's so important at third and fourth grade when we have some students not reading on grade level, that our teachers have the knowledge and skills to help students and close those gaps. So we put a lot of focus into that and the staff PD have been truly important in that piece. In math, we really focused on building wide of problem-solving strategy that we can use that will help students as they get to third and fourth grade and then really increasing that math fact fluency with students and using those programs that we have to help with that. And I also think in both of these areas, the work that we're doing in our collaborative team meetings with our grade levels is instrumental. We really put a focus on looking at student work, seeing which students have mastered standards, which students have not. And then what can we do? Really discussing those instructional strategies to make sure that we are putting the best we can in front of students to raise those scores. And then lastly, creating a positive and supportive culture and climate is our third goal. Really, I put this in the hands of the teacher leaders. We developed three committees this year. One looks at our building-wide discipline systems led by a teacher leader. The other one looks at like those character traits, how we can infuse epic and those pirate principles into our daily work at Gladden. And we also do Pirate Pals, which is where great little grade levels pair up and do activities together related to the epic principles. And then also we have one climate that really focuses on the adult culture climate, because that's an important piece too in supporting kids. That's all I have, but I do want to give a little plug. So, you know, Belton is not my first district. And I just want to say, the data that you've seen today is a testament to how hard the staff at Belton work. And I can just say that coming from other districts, I appreciate how just supportive everybody has been from the top down. And I just appreciate that you have good systems in place that that put kids first and really focus on what can we do to support kids from every level of the school district. So I do really appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions?
I would point out that her attendance, I should say Gladden's attendance up to this date is ninety-four point one. So trending in a positive there as well, Ms. Snyder. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just a comment. That was a great explanation of how all the data comes to be and reflected the way it is. So thanks for explaining that so well.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work for your first year with us.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. Erholtz. We're going to jump to you. Dr. Winkman will be with us in March. So last but not least.
Not last but not least, that's for sure. I do want to thank Henry, that his bridge project. He was a great kid as he came through Mill Creek. And like Teresa said earlier, she's known him for a long time, but that was a great presentation by Henry. And also Teresa, if Tim's driving, tell him to keep his eyes on the road during that whole process, okay? This will be our last time I get a truck to the board, so I just really wanted to start off by saying thank you for the last six years and the opportunity to serve the students and staff and work with you guys. So I appreciate that. Shelley Pedeman's joining us too tonight as she assistant principal. And she'll be taking over. And so let's go to the first slide. Building APR, again, part of the challenge of going last is you've heard a lot of this. And so if you look at our numbers, it's on upward trend. We're very excited about that. You know, we took a little dip last year, but APR is projecting the way it's supposed to be going. Here's our achievement, similar to what the other buildings have presented. You can see the three years. We scored, we improved in four out of the five map tested areas. So that's a big kudos to our staff and students for the hard work they're putting in. The most significant gain, if you look, was between twenty-two and twenty-three in fifth grade math. Went up over seven points, so that's awesome. But again, the area that we didn't increase was in reading in fifth grade. And yeah, there's reasons for that. You know, at fifth and sixth grade level, we're fighting the phones and the culture of not reading as much as they have in the past. And so that's something our building will continue to work on and to promote literacy and reading and make it important. Because we truly feel it is an important, the most important skill you learn while you're in school, along with getting along with people. So yep, everything's trending right there. That was a good year for us in map testing. Shelley's going to take over on attendance.
Hi. Yeah, we've seen an uptick in attendance, just like what Karen talked about. And Mike talked about, we're really working towards our attendance and seeing a positive trend. We're making those phone calls home and teachers are trying to make all of the connections they can with kids and their parents. Because I'm with what Karen said, it's the parents that is really trying to build that connection with them and finding what's the reason for lack of attendance or issues that we're seeing as they come up. So we have calendar charts that will start with kids for behavior tracking and for attendance. So those are things that we look for to help us. We have the ninety-five percent club in our building too. And then we've done attendance competitions in the fall. I'm sure we'll do a couple more this spring. For school improvement, we have three goals. We're working on our professional development with our N W A results and reports. Those are things that I kind of lead within our building as I'm coming out of the classroom and I'm pretty familiar with N W A and the last district that I worked in. So those are things that I'm continuing to show teachers how we're using that, what we can find, connecting that with our I X L skill plans and making sure that we're making intentional moves with our N W A results and those reports. The professional development, we have a little bit more freedom since our teachers aren't doing the literacy training that the elementaries are. So we've been trying our best to make sure that we're using our collaborative team time and that collaborative time to make sure that our teachers are on the same page, they're using the same information. They're looking at trends like if they're seeing an increase in one room and not in another, what's happening, how can we improve? And those C T meetings that we have every Wednesdays have been super helpful and beneficial to the teachers. We're continuing to look at those student focuses and all of our growth plans as the students are making movements through the school year. We've also implemented Project Lead the Way within our science in fifth grade. So those teachers are working through a different resource and trying to work through different ways to help kids learn and grow through that exploratory way of learning. We also are a BIS school and that's Behavioral Interventional Support Team. A couple of weeks ago, I took three of our teacher leaders to a training in Kansas City. And we visited a school and keep looking at ways that we can continue to build our teachers and grow them. And in those, we are doing school-wide expectations, which is a part of that BIS part. We're looking for consistency within our building on how we communicate with kids, how we have expectations of what they're supposed to do in every space. And then it provides us strategies for intervening and responding to inappropriate behaviors that we see occasionally.
What questions do you have for us, guys?
Anyone?
I don't have a question specifically, but I know that all of you collaborate together and you come up with good ideas. And just looking at every single building, how your attendance has improved and hearing comments that even this year, it's even improving more. I just think it's great work that you guys are all working together and coming up with great ideas to get the students in the seats. And kudos.
Thank you.
It's a great job.
Yeah, I was going to say, all of you make our lives easier and make our jobs easier. So we appreciate that. We see a solid trend, in my opinion, of good numbers. So I think we're okay. Dr. Underwood, do you have anything else to say? You say K T will be next month. Yes, K T will be next month. I do want to thank everyone here. You know, obviously the work's not done. I would even point out that Mill Creek is at ninety-two point eight six to date on their attendance. So obviously trending up as well. And you know, attendance isn't everything, but as mentioned earlier, they have to be here to learn. We have to refine and hone our skills. Obviously, looking at not only the professional development piece, the pedagogy that goes along with letters. Training was discussed, trying to find that commonality of ways to, in essence, help our students to achieve academically. And the more and more science and research that we learn and understand to help each and every student, more of a personalized instructional event for our kids can help them, because what works for one does not work for all. And so trying to personalize that, I credit our leaders and helping our staff to do so, to help each and every one of our kids to reach their best, because we want We want every child. It's just like, you know, our children at home. Every one of these kids are ours and we always want our kids to be better than what we are or what we were. And I do truly believe our staff does that. And I just want to say thanks to our principals and our staff.
Yeah, and I want to second that as well. And I also think something worth noting is. You know, combing through this data with all of the buildings and recognizing the influence of those. Early years of, you know, kindergarten, first, second grade. And how COVID really did influence. Where some of these gaps are and how it's affected education. And I think we're just now starting to finally. Really hone in on where the problematic areas are and address. You know, where, where did our students suffer the most during those years of. You know, not being in the classroom, not having the one-on-one instruction and things of that nature. So I just applaud all of you for your efforts. This is not the easy job to do and to problem solve.
Alrighty. Thank you once again. Alrighty, moving on. Title one program evaluation.
Yes, I am happy tonight to present to you the title one program evaluation. For the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Can everyone hear me okay? Yes.
Yes, we can see and hear you clearly.
Okay, great. I'm gonna share with you some information that we gathered from our survey that was presented this month in January. As well as some work that Dr. Seidman, Dr. Mock and myself. Put together to present to you and our findings. So the program goal for title one is to ensure that all children have a fair and equal. And significant opportunity to attain a high-quality education. And you know, just like we were talking about tonight, reach proficiency on challenging state academic achievement standards. And those academic assessments that we administer. The description of title one, it is part of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Or ESEA, as you may have heard it called, and it provides financial assistance to. Local education agencies and schools with high numbers or percentages of children. From low-income families. And so this helps ensure that all children have. An equal opportunity to meet those challenging state academic standards. And in the Belton School District. We utilize title one funds for title one preschool at Grace. For our instructional coaches and learning mentors for our K-four classrooms this year. Program staff, I want to recognize them, our instructional coaches, Angela Sizemore, Kristen Shackelford, Amy Wright, Laura Gibson. And then our title staff at Grace, Jackie Hardy, Casey Westermeyer, Sarah Fennell, Lori Steele and Tammy Harrington. And the students served by our program title one here in Belton are all K-four kids. Including those at Hillcrest Steam and then our Grace Early Childhood Title One Preschool. So our survey results, we had forty-four certified staff who responded. And that was given to those that serve in our title one schools, our K-four buildings as well as Grace. Approximately four percent of the staff responded. Then we had forty-nine parents that responded. So that is a very small percentage of parents, but. Nevertheless, we were able to look at those survey results and really get some good information from those surveys. I'm gonna review with you some of the strengths that we found first. The instructional coaches. Do provide guidance to teachers to improve the practices in the classroom. Which benefit all students. And more than eighty percent of the staff believed that title one was important and beneficial to the mission of educating our students here in Belton. Another strength was the specific goals and objectives. Were tied to the district missions, beliefs and parameters. And staff and parents alike believed that. Students are benefiting from the title one program and both had over sixty-two percent agreement. That it was beneficial to our students. Also, students benefit from small group interventions provided to the elementary students. Through the learning mentors. Some opportunities for growth for our title one. Programming would be suggestions have been made to improve our communication with parents regarding the use of our learning mentors. Just clarifying their purpose, giving more frequent updates on the student's progress and. It's also important to note that funding for additional staff to provide academic interventions and support for students is limited. And that's something that. It's not just an open pot of money. There is a cap on the amount of money that we're given from the federal government. Survey responses from staff indicate a preference for utilizing. Reading teachers in elementary classrooms for interventions rather than having instructional coaches or the learning mentors. So after we looked at. Our survey results and our data that was, that we've been collecting regarding instructional coaches and learning mentors. And the effectiveness, we, when I say we, that's Dr. Seidman, Dr. Mock and I. Have decided that there needs to be some restructuring of the role of our instructional coaches as to their current utilization and. Looking at all of our data and the results of this survey as well. We may not be providing optimal support for both students and teachers in how we're using our instructional coaches currently. We're also going to continue, as you've heard the principal say, that focus on literacy and math for pre-K four and. We want to make sure we're utilizing instructional coaches at those levels for those key subjects. And also make sure that we're auditing the time of our instructional coaches and focusing. Very intently on what they are doing day-to-day and who they're working with to make the most gains for our students. We want to also ensure continued commitment to ensure. All K-four classrooms, our special ed, our speech and language, our ESL teachers, that they are all participating in. What you've heard talked about tonight, the letters program for educators. We're going to keep providing that professional development for them and focusing on that. And that is going to help us address that strong foundational literacy skills for. Our students, especially at that primary level. I do have PDF versions of the report and the survey results available in the board report for you to look at. Do you have any questions regarding the title one? Program evaluation.
I got a couple of questions for you. So you had mentioned restructuring, how you're going to be using your. Instructional coaches. I would like a little bit more elaboration on what that would look like. And then also up here where it said on the survey responses. That they would prefer to utilize a reading teacher in lieu of an instructional coach or a learning mentor. Is that something that we're going to be able to facilitate? Because as you had mentioned, like we have the limited funds. How can we take that feedback into consideration, seeing as they're like. Thanks, but can we get something a little bit more hyper-focused with just the reading portion of it? Do we have a solution to that or? Proposed a solution for that?
That's something that we have been mulling over. Given the results of this survey and the data that we've been gathering this year and looking at previous year's data. As well as our scores that we're turning out as well. And thinking about how we're utilizing those instructional coaches if. We've had many discussions about. Having them working with primary grade levels, maybe pushing into classrooms, some as well. To provide that support to students. As time goes on, but that would be identifying those kids. And putting a plan together as to who's going to participate in that. So I think we're at the foundation of our restructuring effort, but we still have some more work to do on that. Which we will definitely keep you briefed of as we go along. But just after seeing this. And analyzing, like I said, a lot of our data and having some discussion, we do see a need for that restructure to start.
So Kelly, would that mean that our instructional coaches would be looked at as more. Primary coaches rather than going across all grade levels going forward?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you need to action on this because it's a. Alright. Well, let's wait and see if. What happens on the federal level and see with this anyways.
That's very true.
Yeah, I mean, this all might be a moot point. So go ahead, Dr. Underwood.
No, I was just anticipating item C on the agenda. So.
Okay.
I was moving my microphone.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Please keep us informed.
I will do.
Item C, the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar amendment. So we are not going to amend our calendar at this point. I just want to update the board and Ms. Cremley, if I say anything incorrect. In regards to our calendar and the rules and regulations.
I will step in.
Yes, you will. Thank you. So as of right now, obviously we have canceled school for tomorrow. That would put us through, I believe, the Friday after Memorial Day. At this point, that is not changing. We've had discussions internally about. The possibility of using the Monday after Easter. That's still on the calendar as a vacation day as of right now. Could we have other snow events? Yes, we could. I've seen some pretty significant. White precipitation in March in the past, as we know. And so we do not want to amend at this point, but we could possibly. At the, in the month of March, look at that where we are. We're hopeful and optimistic. We can have school on Friday, looking at the temperatures. Obviously, we'll check roads. There's a lot to take into consideration. We have students that walk. We have students that stand at bus stops. We have sixteen-year-old drivers. We have staff that travel from several miles. And so there's so many things that we, we look at and taking that in consideration. Did we want our grounds crews outside Wednesday morning when it was blowing? No. With the temperatures and obviously they're supposed to be very low. We do have. Not policy, but as a procedure. That if we hit minus sixteen wind chill, according to the weather service. A student could receive frostbite standing outside exposed for thirty minutes. And so Dr. Hall put that together many years ago. And so we have lived by that as our number. Obviously, it does not look good for in the morning, hence why we're not having school. In that regard, but back to the calendar. We'll look and see where Friday brings us. We have a little bit of flexibility there. We're trying to protect. I know a lot of people make plans for spring break, but then also people with, with summer. We do have the requirement for a hundred and sixty-nine days this year. And so I know some people believe that is for next year. But the funding is tied for next year. The requirement to attend is this year. So I just wanted to make sure and say that and they can look that up. In statute that was approved on Senate Bill seven twenty-seven. Last year during our legislative session. Yeah, we are kind of tied on that. Alrighty. Any questions on the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar amendment? Alrighty, twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar.
Alright, that is me again, and I'm happy to talk to you about the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar that we're proposing tonight. And I want to first thank our calendar committee that helped work on this calendar. This year and my secretary, Nita Majors, for putting together the calendar document that you see on. The agenda. She and Rebecca worked to come up with a different format. So you may. Not recognize this format, but. We've come up with some different symbols and some different colors, which you can definitely see down in our keys. And I will go over some of the high points that we have to have, just like Dr. Underwood said, we have to first make sure that the calendar has a hundred and sixty-nine days. And our first day is also kind of decided for us as to when we can start. And that first day that we could start would be August eighteenth. So we are starting on, proposing to start on Monday, August eighteenth, and you will see two calendars on here. First, a student calendar. And then the second calendar is our staff calendar. We also have to really make sure that we're looking at keeping our semesters. Close to an equal number as we can get. I know that's very important for the secondary. Levels due to grades and semester ending and. So we do have eighty-one days for our first semester and eighty-eight days for our second. And the group really worked hard to make sure that the quarters balanced out as well. And you can see a breakdown of the quarters in the bottom right-hand corner of the calendar document too, if you're interested in that. And it was important for our staff, one of the. Requests, our calendar committee did a very nice job of going back to their schools and asking for input. Many of the schools came back with that two-week break for winter break around Christmas time and then. And we were also in, able to incorporate a spring break in with Easter this year, which would be that first week in April. The last day would be five twenty-one would be our proposal for that. We still would include six PD and collab days. The staff. The feedback for that is very positive that they had that half a day PD, half a day collaboration with that last. PD and collaboration day in May being our staff recognition service. Do you have any questions for me about the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six student or staff calendars?
Looks good to me. It, it is a different look. And I kind of like it. As usual, Rebecca is. Changing things, so.
Yes, I liked it too. I thought I liked the formatting and. It looks nice when you print it off as well.
Oh, is it Anita and not Rebecca? Either way, they're both very good.
Both of them working together on that.
Okay. Alrighty.
So I guess I would ask.
We'll accept the motion.
Motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar as presented. Ms. Cremley, I'm sorry I interrupted you. Were you going to say something other than that?
I was gonna say that line that you just.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes. Polar plunge update. Maybe.
I'm working on it. Sorry about that. So we had a lot to celebrate this year. This was our ten years of having two super plungers. Paula Glazer and Nikki McKay. And if you look at what they've done over the last ten years, to be a super plunger, you have to have twenty-five hundred dollars raised. And so at minimum, they, the two of them have earned over fifty thousand dollars for Special Olympics over ten years, which is, is huge. This year we had eleven polar plungers besides our, our two super plungers. And they. Let's see, they came up with eighty-seven hundred dollars. Carter McKay was our top earner for the fourth year in a row. We did not win the total amount. Lee Summit kind of blew everybody away with over seventeen thousand dollars raised. But the size of their school district makes that a lot easier to do. But we have a lot to be, be proud of with our polar plungers that represent Belton every year.
You know the question, did we beat our neighbors?
I believe we beat Ray Peck, but didn't come close to Lee Summit.
Well, that's all that matters.
I'm glad I can help.
Alright, thank you. Thank you for everybody doing that. That's a great number.
Absolutely.
And I will be seeing some of our neighbors next week and I will gladly. Brag at them or poke at them. Yes, that is always good. Karen, oh, Karen's not working tomorrow. Alrighty, levy transfer, sir? Friday? Oh, yeah.
Tomorrow's only Thursday.
Oh, good lord. I'm not used to it.
She's not a student anymore.
Not a student anymore. Time will fly. You're having fun, of course. Yes, I just want to bring back up the levy transfer. We've started to share out with staff to help provide them information. In regards to our no-tax increase levy transfer, transferring thirty cents from our debt service levy to our operating fund. Sounds very simplistic, but the Missouri statutes and law require. School districts ask for voter approval, fifty plus one, so fifty percent. Plus one, which will allow us to move those funds. Ms. Hanges is looking at communicating out with our community. We have a plan from about six weeks in, six weeks will start actually next week. So April eighth will be here before we know it. It's going to rapidly approach. So we do have that plan in place. We are also having a group that will. Have a vote yes campaign as well. I know. Uh, I know we're trying to gather some information on that. I don't have tonight or do not, excuse me. Uh, but we will have that uh piece as well, but expect at least a flyer to go out in uh people's mailboxes sharing information. As I've shared with staff so far that I've been able to meet with, um, I'm not telling people to vote yes or vote no, but we want people to be informed voters so they know and understand when they see the ballot language. Uh, it is rather lengthy in language. Uh, if you just read the first half of it, you might think, oh, my goodness, it's a thirty cent uh tax increase, but if you make sure and read the entire uh language to the end, you will see that for where we move the thirty cents, we will take away thirty cents, so the overall levy will remain the same. And so uh, obviously, uh, next month's meeting, we'll talk about that. Hopefully have some more. We do have a one sheet flyer that we've been sharing with staff uh because I know that whether they're seeing parents at ball games, whether they're seeing a drop off or pickup, we want to make sure that our staff are, are well informed of this as well. We've got a few buildings left to do, and then uh we'll also share out. Thanks to all the board, that was a part of the Chamber uh First Friday Coffee. We were able to obviously be a part of and and share the word with a lot of people. I think we had uh forty-seven, forty-eight people in attendance uh here in this room, and so uh we'll continue to work to do that. Not all of our staff live in the district, but they know the parents that do live in the district and or people that, that vote. They can do that and or if worst case scenario, um, I think Ms. Hubbard said that uh twenty-five dollars buys four signs that say vote yes. We can help get those out and encourage people uh in regards to uh supporting this campaign. And I would, if there's any questions or anything else you guys like me to, to add, uh, or Dr. Poizel could point out with uh what kind of funds that we will uh in essence, raise into our operating budget.
Questions, folks? Alrighty. Dr. Poizel, while we're here, why don't, can you give us those numbers? What you think it would be?
Very rough estimate.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're looking at about uh one point six million generated by that, I believe.
Okay, that would go greatly towards uh salaries and stuff, so that would be great. Alrighty, thank you. Any other questions for levy transfer? Legislative update, Dr. Underwood, I'll let you uh handle this one.
Yes, uh, obviously a lot occurring in, in Jeff City. I would point out, as we just talked about calendar, I'll just beat a dead horse. And so the one sixty-nine requirement, there was no uh in essence forgiveness or any type of formula in regards to snow days and or inclement weather. Typically, we've had that in the past. Uh, I do know that they are working on um a couple of bills. I believe it's Senate Bill six oh seven, House Bill uh four seventy-one or seven forty-one. Uh, my mind slips me a little bit. Uh, that could possibly allow for some forgiveness uh with the number of days. Obviously, we have our AMI days that are in place, and we've utilized six of those. But then in addition, uh, we haven't missed this many days of uh in-person instruction. I think we looked back to twenty-eleven. So it's been a long time uh since we've missed this much. And so I guess it's once a decade or what do they call those, the hundred-year storms that happen every other year? Well, this one truly has, has not happened for more than ten years. So there, there's that piece. There's a lot, uh, obviously that uh we're focusing upon. We have cooperating schools that uh board members and uh the Cooperative Schools for Greater Kansas City plan to uh be in attendance, I believe, on the twenty-sixth of February uh in Jeff City. So if anyone wants to attend that, uh, watching ESA vouchers, uh, the concern there with uh putting more of our uh public funds into uh privatization. So there's some concern there. Uh, obviously, there's concern about open enrollment and uh how they're trying to set that up. Uh, I think there are ways that it could work, but then again, in essence, what they have in front of us right now or what they're proposing uh personally is not a good plan, uh, because students that um are not able to um be provided the opportunity in other school districts, it kind of creates the haves and have-nots. And I think it should be a, one of the things about public education, it is a level playing field for all. It does not matter how much your parents make, and it should not matter what your zip code is. Everybody should be provided a top-notch education, and I think that they definitely create haves and have-nots with their uh plan legislation that they have currently.
Any questions? Alrighty. MSBA policy, second reading. Chair will accept a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the second reading of the policies presented. Twenty twenty-four C.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of the MSB policies twenty-four C as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Horizontal advancement?
Yes, just one horizontal advancement this evening. Um, the administration asked the board to approve the horizontal advancement as presented.
Motion to approve the horizontal advancement as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the horizontal advancement as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Passes. Committee updates. Let's start with uh MSBA.
We have the lunch and learns. Um, and the next one will be um March seventh, and they mostly give you the legislative updates. Dr. Underwood kind of covered those. Advocacy Day is um March eleventh at Jefferson City, where we have the opportunity to meet as a group and then go and, and meet with our legislators. Something new this year, they're going to have and uh it's a Zoom and it's at four P M. And it's open for pretty much everybody, teachers, administrators, school board members, and what it's going to be is it's going to be uh basically teachers, students presenting and showcasing AI project. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll go back. Okay, it'll be students and teachers sharing and showcasing AI projects uh during that time at four o'clock on March twenty-eighth. We have um some new rules for um our governance team award, but those will not go into effect until the following school year, so we will be using the same um uh form that we use this year or last year for this year's. And um I got some clarification on um our um leadership and advocacy part. And um the fact that our district, and I like to brag about this a little bit, we take time out and uh Mr. Miller is really good at doing this and getting our legislators into our buildings so they can see what we're doing as, as a a school district. And I think we've enlightened some, even though um they may not say it as exuberantly as we do, uh, but those will count for us instead of going to advocacy day uh as a quorum. So that'll be good news for next year when we have those activities. So uh, when I spoke with Catherine at MSBA today, she was very impressed at what we do as far as getting our legislators into our district and letting them know what we're going on. And I just wanted to brag about that for a minute. And I think that's it. Um President's Zoom is next Wednesday, but that's on Jerry, so he knows that about that, so.
I've been doing those. Um, those Zoom calls are uh interesting. Uh, they've been a little too um coached for me, and I have led that. I, I like it when the presidents can have a little time to have a conversation. And what that is is for you, folks, is that the presidents of each different school boards around the state get on the Zoom call, and we can have a conversation about something that may be going on at Fort Osage or Ray Pack, and we can all talk about how we would approach it or if we are seeing something similar. So those are a pretty good call. Um, they're a little long because of all the content, but they're, they're, they're uh pretty good ones. Um, as far as anything else for MSBA, uh, the Belcher stuff is out there for to, to be graded. I started on those for us. Um, Region Four is not voting on Region Four. Region Four, we're doing uh Region Seven, which is the St. Louis area, and Belton is in the Region Four area. And they, they've tried to swap that a couple of times, and it, it seems to work pretty good. So uh, they're doing it that way. So that'll work for MSBA. Belton cares, that's probably you as well, or is it Teresa?
I got Teresa.
Okay.
Trivia Nights next Friday, the twenty-eighth. It's open to anybody who wants to put a team together. It's a great time, and all the funds are used to provide a safe and um fun after-grad party for our seniors and their guests at High Blue Wellness, door prizes, games, photo booth. Uh, we roll it out for them to have let's see, we have a youth forum next Wednesday um from three to six, and that's by invitation, but it's where our students, uh, we have a panel who's talked to our uh community members about concerns they have with things going on in their world at, at school, community with anything from mental illness to drugs to whatever is their topic. Uh, they present it to the group, and then we end up having dinner with those groups, and the students go and sit sorry, sit with those, those uh community members and talk in detail about some of the things that they had talked about in the the forum part of the evening. We're looking way ahead now. We have the Troy Shaw Golf Tournament, that's August ninth, and that fundraises to help student scholarships and teacher scholarships. We have billboards that go out on forty-nine, and they change monthly, so you might want to check those out to see uh what's going on there. Um, and that's it for Belton cares for right now.
Sorry, I was talking a little bit. I wanted to, I, next Wednesday's kind of a full day, so I wanted to make sure that since I got the invitation that I can fit it into the schedule, juggle it into the schedule.
Or I think somewhere, well, no, it's four, but I'm sorry. I have to be there at three. I apologize.
Four to six.
Four to six. I'm sorry, is the actual event.
So if we left Jeff City at one, we'd be able to get back here.
I, I sometimes forget my obligation is a little longer than the, the general.
Okay, all right. That works. Alrighty. Educational Foundation, anything going on?
Um, major saver cards are going on right now. Um, I don't have any with me because we met uh virtually for our meeting this week, and so I haven't been able to pick major saver cards up, but students are selling them, and if you're interested, get with me and I will get those for you. That uh is going on through the twenty-sixth. There's a chili cook-off this weekend with uh and uh the foundation has a, an entry. We're hoping Sonya's been trying some new recipes. We're hoping to come out of there as a winner this year. Um, March twenty-second is Bingo Night at Johnny's Tavern. Let's see. Pirate Dash is April fourth at Wallace Park. It's a glow run, so that'll be a fun evening if you would like to um get a team together or just go on your own. The gala this year is September sixth. And we don't have a date yet, but we have a month, and November will be the Turkey Bowl again. So those are the upcoming dates for um everything with the foundation.
Are the major saver cards still fifteen dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty. All right, some missile, oh, wait, committee updates, anything for the city? Nope, already.
We get a reduction in our water bill.
Water bill's gone down.
Three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
There you go. That's a, that's a good thing. The voters will be happy about that. All right, some miscellaneous dates. February twentieth is the uh Belton High School enrollment, evening enrollment, four to seven P M. Twenty-seventh is the Bet, Belton High School Theater Children's Show performance at six thirty. The twenty-fifth is our uh, our uh Cooperative School District of Greater Kansas City Zoom meeting. What time is that, Dr. Underwood?
It is six thirty.
Six thirty?
That should be with Steve Carroll.
Okay. February twenty-sixth uh is the uh Cooperative School District of Greater Kansas City Day at the Capitol. Uh, February twenty-eighth, of course, is the Belton Cares trivia night, as we discussed earlier. Mary, I have my team pretty well taken care of. I'll bring you some cash. March sixth is the Belton Middle School Enrollment Night, uh, six to eight P M. March eleventh is the Missouri School Boards Association Day at the Capitol. March seventeenth through the twenty-first is no school spring break. March nineteenth is the next Board of Education meeting at seven P M. March twentieth through the twenty-third is the COSPA Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. And April fourth is the date change for the Senior Citizen Springs Luncheon at the Fieldhouse. So that's at noon on April fourth. And uh, folks, I will not be available. I will be zooming in more than likely on the next board meeting. So that, Madam Vice President, you will, you will have that one. Just to give you some, some heads up. Anything else for the good cause?
Some uh, doesn't affect the price of tea in China, but daylight savings time does occur on March ninth, so it will be here before we know it. Maybe here before warm weather. I don't know.
We can only hope. We can only hope. Alrighty, the chair will accept a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, Teresa?
Yes.
Norm? Mary? Dave?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thanks, folks. Be safe.